GCTV. I will begin with roll call. Councillor Gass.
Present.
Councillor Maguire.
Present.
Councillor Meany.
Present.
Councillor Hite.
Here.
And I'm councillor Chapel. To my right is town manager Michael Foley. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Anyone need to remove items from the consent agenda? I had one small edit for the 30th of January. So I'm going to remove that from the consent agenda. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, which would include the minutes from the February 6, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
And also, yes. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from this special town council meeting on January 30th, 2024.
So moved.
I'll second.
Just one small edit on packet page three. Under Roll Call, it lists everybody that was present, but it does not list Anne Gass, who was excused from that meeting.
And that was for?
The special meeting on January 30th.
January 30th, okay. I'll have that correction.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, so did anyone else have edits? I'll go to vote. Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
So yes. Next up is public comments of non-agenda items. Comments are intended for information sharing, not discussion. Comments in excess of three minutes are welcome at the end of the agenda prior to adjournment. Is there anyone here?
Okay.
Yep, come on up if you could just state your name and address and there should be a sign-in sheet there.
Pardon me, what was the last?
If you could state your name and address and then just there's a sign-in sheet when you're done, you can fill that out.
My name is Gregory Rand. I'm a resident at Five Brasely Way here in Gray. I'd like to talk about a situation my brother-in-law, Bill Chapman, and I find ourselves in, which I think a lot of you are familiar with. I'll go through this as quick as possible. We bought a piece of land, 25 acres in 2017. 2018, we did a two-lot subdivision, which included a private drive called Tressel Way, which is just to the north of coal farms. In 2020, Scott Liberty purchased a piece of land that abutted ours. He bought two lots. We'll call them A and B. And there was a right-of-way over that property that his property is the old Sears auction barn, which you might be familiar with. We had a right-of-way from the early 1900s, went right through the center of his parking lot. In 2020, he asked us if we would consider swapping that right-of-way for a 60-foot right-of-way to the south of the auction barn, which we agreed to. It worked well for both of us. In 2000 and see, here we go. Scott in 2022, I believe, or 21, tried to do a three-lot subdivision. And he was Scott Liberty, his engineering consultant, DM Roman, his surveyor, John Palmerner, and I believe Mr. Webster for the town were present at a planning board workshop meeting. Our right-of-way at that time was shown on those maps. When this group went in front of the planning board, our right-of-way was not shown. They were using maps. We believe older maps, older surveys from 2010, 2011. Mr. Cullenberg, who originally did these surveys, we spoke to recently, said he believes that it appears as though our old 1900s right-of-way was erased. And the survey was altered in other ways as well. But the three-lot subdivision was approved. It was approved with an impervious surface of 50.7%. After the approval, we found out at a later date that our right-of-way had not been shown, so we applied for an entrance permit. Our entrance permit was denied because of the impervious surface issue. The representative from DM Roman and Scott Liberty told the town that they had an impervious surface of 65%, which didn't allow us to have an entrance because that would have exceeded the 65%. We were denied. We went in front of the zoning board for practical difficulty variance, which we received at a cost of about $23,000 to us. We had legal representation. At that zoning board meeting, Mr. Liberty also had legal representation, actively trying to deny us access to our right-of-way. But like I said, we were given the variance. And here we are months later. Our variance included that by three minutes?
Yeah, you could just wrap up.
Okay.
We are only
All right. We're giving a 12-month timeline to get our road in, so we're under the gun. More information is coming forward all the time. Irregularities in Mr. Liberty's planning board information. I think what we would like to see is, like I said, we had more information come out just recently. We would like to see this process slowed down. He's going to amend at the planning board on March 7th. And I don't I don't have any faith in the facts that he's represented so far, and I think we need some extra time to take a good look at what he's presenting this time. His impervious surface issue has now changed from 65 to 59.8. The number changes all the time. It's very discouraging on our part, the money we've spent. I'd like to stay later in 8 o'clock.
So yeah, we do have an executive session scheduled at the end of our meeting. But we could potentially have you comment before we exit into that, yeah, if you'd like to stay.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry to cut you off.
That's okay.
Okay.
We can just chat.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rand. Okay, so I'm moving on to action items and our first item to review is the Community Resilience Partnership Resolution. So I'm looking for a motion to for the Gray Town Council to approve and authorize the town manager to sign the proposed Community Resilience Partnership Resolution.
So moved.
Second.
So as you all know, up here, we had a workshop with the Resiliency Committee last time we met. Really good conversation that identified the priorities they had worked with the community to identify. There were top, there were five top priorities, the first of which was work on water quality and watershed work. And this resolution essentially allows the the committee and the town to enter into an agreement with the state to work towards those goals that have been identified and also apply for grants to fund that work. Anyone have thoughts or comments they'd like to? Go ahead, Dan.
Um, yeah. I'm curious how many councillors have had a chance to read the Maine Won't Wait plan that the state has.
I have read, not recently, but I have read a good portion of it. It's very dense, but
Like our company.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, it's even dense, more dense than that. But I have read it, you know, not recently, but I've read.
I will confess, I didn't read the 260-page whole version. I did read the executive. And I have some concerns because that's the document basically that this resolution is based on. And if we're not familiar with that document, I think it's difficult to I do want to thank the committee. They had a whole bunch of additional to call.
Whereas?
Where, yeah, I didn't, I wanted really hard to try not to say that. Whereas. To choose from and to add to this, and clearly they resisted that temptation, and I think that makes it a better document because I think it's easier to understand what I have a couple of changes that I would like to suggest. The first, whereas whereas the town of Gray experiences intense rainstorms, flooding, drought, wildfires, high heat emergencies, and other natural hazards. I would like to strike wildfires and high heat emergencies. I don't, I think the last wildfire that was even close to Gray was in 1947. I just don't think it's there. And I think that it says other natural hazards, which I think encompasses all of it. So I just think it makes the document feel more like something that applies to us and less boilerplate if we strike that phrase.
I would be comfortable with the wildfires striking that. As you noted, that might could be encompassed in other natural hazards, but I'm definitely comfortable in calling out high heat emergencies. And just the last few years here, we've had some really serious heat waves that have warranted opening up, opening up cooling stations in the library for extended use. So I think those are relevant.
Okay. And then the last, my last change is the last, whereas the town of Gray is prepared to demonstrate leadership in reducing energy use, greenhouse gas emissions, increasing the resilience of people, infrastructure, and businesses, period. And I'd like the rest of that struck.
So you would like to take the part out about supporting the Maine Won't Wait for your climate action?
Yeah.
How do others feel about that?
Fine with that. Because this is an optional whereas. And yeah, and I think it's, I think it's fine for us to be moving towards this resiliency goal without necessarily endorsing that particular point. I don't have a problem in endorsing that plan, but to, you know, to get more support for this resolution, I'm straight to me.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely elements of the plan that are not applicable to our community. I think the committee acknowledged that by removing a lot of the extraneous whereas's that that in particular addressed things like, you know, sea level rise and things like that. But yeah, I think to Matthew's point, if it will help all of us get behind this, I'm comfortable with removing that reference in particular if it's not a requirement. Anyone else?
Okay, those were my, actually my intentions.
I know that this document was provided to us by the committee, and I can't recall if it was in a Word document format, but if we were able to edit it or not, but I can look into that.
Pretty easy topic.
Yeah, we could certainly do that. And we should also put it, Mike, on letterhead.
Yep. Oh, yeah, I can, once it's approved, I can make that. The only other thing I just realized that, because I wasn't involved in the drafting of this, there's not really like a closing whereas another paragraph that closes, now be it ordered by the town council on this day, this is our, whatever. I can add something like that, and if the council doesn't object. If the council wants to see it in final form, we can, you know, table it to our next meeting, or we can approve it with the recommended changes.
Yeah.
And then I can circulate it.
I think we could just change the motion to as amended if
Yeah.
if folks are
There is a deadline, I think.
Yeah, there is. Yeah. And Matthew is okay with that change? Are you seconded? Are you?
Yes.
Anyone else? I just want to again thank the Resiliency Committee for all their work. I know they've been, they've been working on this for over, probably over two years now. And it's certainly going to be satisfying to be able to apply for some grants to support a lot of this good work. So I appreciate their time and effort in this, planning for this. Okay, I'll go to vote. Anne?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And also, yes. And just to clarify, the motion was as read, but also as amended at the end. Okay, moving on. Just looking for a motion to for the Gray Town Council to approve town manager Michael Foley to the EcoMaine Board of Directors.
So moved.
Second.
Mike, I'll give you a chance to talk about this, but I just want to point out that Gray is a member-owner of EcoMaine, and I think we traditionally had a member of staff historically on the Board of Directors, and this is just an appointment of Mike since he's now in role as town manager. But did you want to elaborate?
Sure. I put a quick slide up just to refer to this. So as the chair mentioned, Gray is a member-owner of EcoMaine. There's, I think, 28 board seats on that board, and they serve dozens of other communities in Maine and New Hampshire. And EcoMaine is a leader in, you know, the sustainable efforts of dealing with trash and recycling in the region. And so I'm honored to join this board over the years that I've been serving in my previous roles. Westbrook was not a member of EcoMaine, so we didn't have any representation. But I'm really excited to be working with Kevin Roach, the executive director. And I went to my first board meeting, not as an official member, but as a representative of the town at the last meeting. And I'm very excited about some of the things. There's actually a lot of critical things in the area of recycling that are coming down the pike that I have to be more involved in right off the bat. Separate from EcoMaine, at least for the town's perspective. So under new recycling initiatives, so there's an opportunity for the town to receive money to help with processing recycling through a state initiative where those who produce recyclable materials have to pay. So there's more to come on that. And then they also, I know, as we talked about with the Resiliency Committee, EcoMaine actually does participate in composting and bring materials to a facility in New Hampshire. So there'll be more to come down the pike for that, as well as an opportunity for residents in Gray to potentially participate in composting with EcoMaine. The EcoMaine Board did ask that we provide an alternate, which is the next item on the agenda. So Justine Hutchings, our finance director, has been attending when able to for the last few months. And so her and I will stay in constant communication about the initiatives, and I'll do my best to attend as a representative of the town into the future. But they do have a lot of initiatives going on and looking forward to participating on behalf of the town there. So thank you for the appointment.
Go to vote. Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Also, yes. Congratulations, Mike. So I'm also looking for a motion for the council to approve Justine Hutchings as the alternate member to the EcoMaine Board of Directors.
So moved.
Second.
Just want to thank Justine for stepping up to do that.
Yeah.
Anyone having comments? I think Mike covered. Why should we need a Justine as an alternative? Okay, I'll go to vote. Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
And I'm also, yes. Okay, next up is report from council chair. That's me. So you all have in your hands, Mike, just handout before we got started, a proposed budget schedule. So we should look that over during his time for remarks and just see if we're all available and how we feel about that. Dan, I just want to acknowledge I did get your email about adding to this agenda some check-ins about our tracking, tracking our work, and I think that is a good idea. So I'll work to put that in the agendas going forward, either where you suggested under activities or maybe in separate planning or something.
Thank you.
Also, Mike and I met on the 14th with Jensen Baird. They were kind enough to spend some, a good amount of time with us reviewing all the pending legal matters the town is working with them on. And we probably will need to check in at some point soon about some work that has been going on related to those conversations. I also attended on the 15th, the staff welcome for Mike, the staff appreciation committee, which is new, was kind enough to organize that. I want to just thank Claire and Inga for their hard work. It was really quite nice, and it looks like you had a pretty good, pretty good turnout.
We did.
Yeah, that's great. So it was nice to chat with some staff and eat some new faces. On the 20th today, Anne and I submitted testimony at the state and local government committee on LD 2102, which is the bill that we've been working with Teresa Purse and Annie Graham on to help repeal what is known as LD 1, the property tax levy limit, which has frequently tanked our budgets and is commonly misunderstood in the community. I was happy that both representatives from the Maine Municipal Association and the government, excuse me, the governor's administration, I think it was the economic office, there were representatives there.
Yeah, it was a state economist.
Oh, a state economist, yes. They were there to testify in favor of this bill, so that was unexpected, but also good. And I just want to thank Teresa Purse and Annie Graham for shepherding this bill. Hopefully, it gets moved to a work session next and is on the docket for this spring legislative session. I did note that the chair, Chair Nangle noted in his comments that since the law, the statute is not being utilized or enforced by the state, it likely shouldn't be on the books. So I thought that was a positive sign. Want to remind everyone that we did end up scheduling a workshop for this Thursday with the ordinance advisory committee to review the GIS mapping. I do want to check in, though. I know we had heard back from at least one planning board member that was able to attend. And I know Al Schaefer will be there from Open Space walking us through the map. And did you hear back from anyone from open, anyone else from Open Space, whether or not they'd be able to attend?
For the 22nd?
Yeah, for the 22nd.
I, I had the impression that people were going to be able to.
Okay.
I didn't hear any hard no.
Right, that's why we moved forward with scheduling because I hadn't, we didn't have any hard no's. I know Matthew and Marty are unavailable, so they're excused from that meeting, but I think we should move forward with the presentation. Hopefully, just whoever's available can attend. And then I want to also point out that we are, our next council meeting is actually March 12th. Typically, we meet the first Tuesday of the month, but because of the presidential primaries, we'll be meeting on the 12th. And then our subsequent meeting is also pushed out to the 26th.
And that also changes the April.
It does change the April meetings also. They're all pushed out, so April 9th and the 23rd. And then I want to note that I'll be attending a mediation on March 5th related to one of the legal matters for the town. So I will be there representing town for that. And that the Village Transformation Project team will be reconvening on March 6th to discuss Brown Street in particular. That's all I had. Mike, did you have anything?
Sure, I have a few items and some slides to go along with them. So I just wanted to report a few items. Last council meeting during our budget presentation hearing, we heard some concerns from water quality issues for Route 100. Wanted to let folks know I did some information gathering for that. So there's an opportunity to perhaps to connect a water line from Cumberland in partnership with the Portland Water District, who has a line that ends there. They've estimated the cost to be about $1 million per mile, and that cost would have to be borne by the residents who that line would serve. But the Water District is interested in exploring, for the benefit of the entire system, a loop line that comes from Wyndham. And so we would have to partner with the Gray Water District in order to discuss those possibilities. So I have had some initial conversations with folks from the Gray Water District, and I'm attending their upcoming board meeting, Board of Trustees meeting, so we'll have some of those conversations, but I know it was a concern of residents. So just wanted to, hopefully, folks from that had come will see that we're exploring. It's not something that's going to happen overnight, but it is something that we'll try to begin some of the discussions on. Should the district consider a loop line with us in partnership of the Gray Water District that would cut down the cost significantly for the residents? Because it would be an investment in the system as a whole to help with reliability for the entire system if there was issues in other parts. So that's definitely an opportunity that we don't want to miss out on. Also, we had some concerns from residents at the last meeting about traffic concerns, so I've since met with the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office, which was on my agenda to meet with anyways as the town's law enforcement partner. Wanted to let folks know that really staffing is a significant concern with Gray's law enforcement coverage. They, I met with the sheriff's office and they compare the town of Gray to the town of Standish as far as an operational point with calls for service, activity, and even in fact, they think that we're a little bit busier than Standish from a traffic standpoint and with the amount of mental health calls that we have in the community. And so they just wanted people to understand that in Gray, we have 2.3 deputies per year, where in Standish, they will have eight at the beginning of the fiscal year. And so we will need to explore how we time that and how we make that investment. I'll see what's possible in this coming budget to potentially invest in additional law enforcement coverage. But we have a fairly limited coverage in Gray for law enforcement, and so we want to be able to be sure we're equipped to be able to respond to the concerns of residents with traffic safety and crimes that happen in the community. And so with the current staffing, a lot of the officers really get tied up with dealing with emergency situations, and they don't have the ability to deal with proactive enforcement. So that'll be something I will continue to look at. So I just want to make sure councillors are aware that that might be coming down the pike for future investment in sheriff's coverage. And then want to let everyone know I'm working diligently on the fiscal year 25 budget. By charter, that budget is due 90 days prior to the election, which is March 12th. And I hope to be able to deliver that budget to councillors electronically and probably a hard budget book by March 7th, which is the Thursday that usually packets become available in advance of our meetings. And I circulated a draft budget review schedule that's different than from what the council had proposed before. And I appreciate the council's flexibility to let me work on the budget. What I've tried to stick with is Tuesday evenings, so we can kind of set that expectation in the future for both staff and councillors that meetings discussing the budget and things will take place on Tuesday evenings. And the proposed schedule I circulated has, is one in conjunction with some council meetings that we already have scheduled with one additional meeting. So the dates that we're considering is March 12th, March 19th, March 26th, and April 9th, for which on April 9th, I would hope that the council would consider having a public hearing and approval of the budget warrants, which would give me and the council two months to educate the public on the budget, and that would be attending community meetings, community gatherings, meeting with residents who are concerned. In the meantime, I'll be attending the, I'll be supporting the clerk's office in the election on March 5th and discuss with residents that the budget process and the ability, and will also be available on Election Day, which I think that one's June 11th. Yes, June 11th. I'll be available in the, assisting the clerk's office in the polls and be available to answer questions about the budget and have information about the budget. So that's the schedule outline. Let me take a look and see, let me know if you see anything glaring that doesn't seem to work, and then I'll work to circulate that with department heads. And that schedule may tweak a little bit based on department heads availability. And then I wanted to share with the council my goals for the budget, which I think you can share in. The primary goal will be financial accountability and sustainability. I think there's been some challenges in that area in the past, and I hope to be able to help create a system that best manages the accountability of our finances as well as, you know, long-term sustainability for resources and best managing those. So that'll be one of our priorities. And then the other priority will be laying the foundation for the future, similar to the conversation about law enforcement. Similar to the conversation about law enforcement, as our community grows, we want to make sure we have a solid foundation of staff. And resources to be able to build upon that in the future and be able to to move the community forward. So those will be uh my priorities a- and that will involve, you know, some budget reorganization and some fund, new funding strategies and things of that nature, so. Um and the budget will hopefully look a lot different to you when it's presented, both from a transparency standpoint and informational standpoint. So I'm I'm hoping to have as complete of a budget as possible. Um some of the challenges initially is um this year, the Cumberland County Government switched from a calendar year to a fiscal year. So they don't have a finalized budget, but we can base it on estimates of what the proposed, the manager's proposed budget was, if if we don't have final numbers. By the time we release it, and then I have no idea if and when the school department will have um availability of figures. So I'll try to uh at least show what it would look like in the, from a tax rate perspective um with what the school. So those will be two kind of unknowns. Thankfully, this year, most of the statewide unknowns um are fairly known. Sometimes we we have things we're waiting on the state budget and things of that nature. There's not a lot of those. So I'll be able to put together a municipal budget that hopefully you guys can be proud of and hopefully get the support of the voters in June. So that is info on the budget, and then just a few other general updates. Um I've attended a school board meeting um to introduce myself to them. As well as um I have a future meeting with Superintendent King to better understand the school department and their operations and hopefully potentially learn more about their budget process. And then um I've got a future meeting with the Graywater District, as I mentioned. I'm also been connecting with managers in the region through an organization that GP Cog organizes Southern Main Managers um. Group as well as there's a Lake Region Managers Group that I'll be joining a meeting with tomorrow. So I'll be able to check in with our colleagues in Bridgeton and Wyndham to learn a little bit more. Um also want to let everyone know I'm meeting uh tomorrow with um our banking relationship, Andersgogging Savings. Um we have a new representative for the town that started in the fall, so um some of that kind of has got lost in the transition. So we want to make sure um the town's funds are um being managed appropriately, as well as invested appropriately. Um considering the more favorable uh investment markets right now with interest rates. So we will be um working to ensure um that we have those um things in order. And then the department reports were included in your packet, and then I just want to mention, I know you're going to afford Mr. Rand the opportunity to come back, but I've spoken with him at Town Hall. And I'm extremely confident in the staff um who's developing a resolution to the concerns that Mr. Rand has. Um and um they uh the issues I feel for Mr. Rand and the money that he's had to spend, and I shared that with him. Um but that is a civil dispute between him and the property owner um who who rate, who raised the issues that Mr. Rand um has reported to the council. So I'm I'm again, I just want to let the council know the staff is working on his concern, and it's important that that the staff, that the council know that, that the staff is working. Um to resolve that, and um it might not be to to Mr. Rand and Mr. Chapman's satisfaction, but I'm fairly confident based on my experience that it's, they're doing the right thing. And that's uh all I have for my report today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I will move on to committee reports. Matthew, do you want to start?
Um I have not had any committee meetings since our last meeting. Um the uh Dry Mills School. Is um. They are meeting on the twenty seventh of February, that's their next meeting. They had a meeting scheduled for last night, but um that was canceled. Uh Gray Community Television is the twenty eighth. Um the Rec Committee is March fourth. Um that's all I've got for the, before the next council meeting.
Great, thank you. Marty?
Okay, the. The zoning board will meet February twenty eighth, that's a week from tomorrow night at seven o'clock. The Planning Board meets again March seventh at seven o'clock. Uh they met, Planning Board met last. February eighth and discussed a small issue with Lot One. They were concerned about the 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 one hundred year weather event, and they're they're leaving it that, that lot alone. Um Blueberry Festival met. By a teams on February thirteenth and discussed items like bands, food trucks. Uh Maine Art Commission, lawn signs, uh print media, website, rack cards, et cetera. And they want to have a a sit down with the fire chief on safety. The Finance Committee will meet. Uh February twenty ninth at four P M and there's. No meeting scheduled for uh for commi- for Community Day, and that's all I've got.
You Marty? Um Anne, do you want to go?
Sure. Um let's see, Resiliency Committee has been meeting twice a month. Uh they're just really cranking. Um they sort of, it's like one official meeting and one sort of workshop uh a month to try to finish up the resolution, so thank you for that vote. Um uh at our last, their last meeting, which is uh last Monday. Uh they met with Little Sabega Lake and Highland Lake Association Representatives, as well as Heather Hunt from Cumberland County Soil and Water District. The agenda included follow-ups from the February seventh discussion with the council, as well as. Uh discussion with a a water, with a Lake Association Representatives about water quality needs and ways that the town might collaborate with them. Uh on a commu- community residency partnership grant. Um they meet again next Monday. Um Open Space Committee is working hard on recruiting new members of. The Planning Department had asked Open Space to create a list of target properties for, you know, potential conservation. And members began working on those, but then we had a broader discussion about the value of such a list. And um and we ended up revisiting the draft uh open space plan, the the open space. Property evaluation tool that was included in the open space plan and decided that we would try experimenting with it using, uh you know, maybe using it with a new. Um open space subdivision planning going forward. You know, we, as I've mentioned, we've been consulting a little bit with developers at the, at the. You know, front end of the process of around the the land to conserve. Um so that might, I think that will be really interesting to use that tool and and sort of, you know, trial it. Uh and we have upcoming meetings scheduled with the the February twenty second with uh and and then also on March seventh for the Planning Board. I actually um wondered uh um whether it made sense to. Uh and and I guess our contract zoning, uh our contract zone um ordinance allows us to do this, but it, I wondered whether or not. There would be potential for having like a mini contract zone process just for open space, uh you know, giving the planning board, I guess, maybe with input from Resiliency. Um you know, some capability of negotiating with developers around. You know, satisfying mutual goals of pres- preserving open space and also um, you know, whatever minor adjustments that the developer might want. So I don't know whether that's um, that would not apply in every case, but maybe for higher value open space and subdivisions. Um so that's sort of a seed I'm just planting for a future discussion. And uh BTP, I just, the Village Transformation Project, I I more than owe you guys a report, uh you know, we mostly be keeping you up to date. Uh but I have been working on one for December, January, should be able to get to you in uh the next day or so. It took four tries to schedule the meeting on Brown Street, uh but that is now scheduled for March sixth. Um and uh the VTP Communications Committee met this this morning. Kyle is beginning work on a a new video. That will be used to introduce residents uh to the a- and and business as well to the VTP. It will take a little bit of time to complete, but it it will be a great tool that we can share on the website as well as on GCTV to uh acquaint people with the goals of the. Um of the VTP and just en- encourage uh, you know, and have residents and business owners sort of speaking for it.
Thanks, Dan. Dan, did you have anything?
Um a couple of little things. Anne, you don't owe us anything, I don't.
Right, I know.
I attended um the GP Cog uh sort of Northern Mission Member Group um. On the uh eight uh in Krista's stead. Um and thank you, Marty, for covering Planning Board for me for that night.
No problem.
Um it is a follow-up meeting for a meeting that was had last fall. Um that includes the sort of northern. Fringes of GP Cog's range. And it's generally just an attempt to try and look for any synergies between us. The possibility to share things. There was some talk about, you know, regionalization efforts. There was a representative from the county there. Um so it's um, it's kind of a loose net group of people. And there felt like there was some value in just having a understanding of what each community is going through. Yeah, what the sort of hot issues are for them. And so the group plans to meet again probably uh. Later on this year. Um. Then uh Marty covered Planning Board for me, so I don't have any other committee reports, other than I guess to say that we did have. An email from Lisa and Lacey, who are the co-plant coordinators that Krista and I kind of um shepherd for the council. And they have put out a survey to all the town council committees um asking them to kind of document. What their committee work is doing to sort of further the implementation of the co-plant. Um that's all I'm, I think it's an opportunity for all of us to remind our committees that we're on, that that needs to be filled out by the end of this month. And I look forward actually to sort of getting that update from Lisa and Lacey when they have a chance to pull it all together. Um and just a quick word, I want to thank uh. The manager for continuing to include the department head reports, those monthly reports. They're a real solid sort of. Insight into the workings of the departments and sort of the issues that um. You know, they have to work with day in and day out, and so really, I personally like them a lot. Because I feel like I I just have a much better sense of of uh what the town's doing to work, so I appreciate continuing that tradition. That's all I have for committees.
Thanks, Dan. Yeah, I don't, I also don't have a lot, none of the committees I'm on um has met since our last meeting. But Ordnance Advisory Committee, as I mentioned, will have the joint meeting on Thursday of this week um with Open Space Committee, Planning Board, and Council. Um and then uh Greater Portland Council of Governments Executive Committee is scheduled to meet um on the twenty seventh um next week for our February meeting. Um. Correspondence and activities. Um Anne, did you want to?
Sure. Uh let's see, um as Krista mentioned earlier, I gave in-person testimony today in favor of LD twenty one oh two. Uh that would repeal the municipal property tax cap. Uh I thought the hearing went really well, would seem, you know, pretty favorable. Uh and uh so uh you know, fingers crossed that we can wipe this off the map and and stop um. Burdening towns with this really pretty useless um law and requirement. Uh I did speak with Sandy Carter and uh we met with uh Mike actually regarding the Ballfields relocation. Um and uh and Mike and I met to get synced up on the VTP next steps. Uh and I received several emails from Bill Chapman that I've been tracking, so that's about it for me.
Anne?
Uh yeah, I've also, as everyone else has, has been on the the email thread that Bill has kept us up to date with the issues that they've found out. Well, with the subdivision that affected their right of way. Um I sent a email to council manager about LD uh twenty one oh one. Which is more than just the LD issue, and it, the piece that caught my eye was the Shoreland zoning component, which. Um you know, Standish has happened. Now Raymond is embroiled in a real fight with someone who basically. Had the attitude of it's better to beg forgiveness than ask permission. Uh and those.
Sometimes.
Well, unfortunately, um if you have the money, you can stonewall the process pretty much indefinitely. And so LD uh two one oh one would give municipalities uh more tools to resolve those kinds of conflicts more quickly. Um and I think that that's i- important as far as assuring that our quality of the leagues is concerned. Um I also sent an email to the council about some suggestions for our volunteer awards, which will happen later this year. And then, as I mentioned before, we heard from Lisa and Lacey about the co-plant. And. That's all I have.
Thanks, Dan. Marty?
Uh yeah, fourteenth, my wife and I went to, went to lunch at the the. First Congregational Church in Ovaster, and 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 we ran into the the town manager. Also, I had a brief uh texting exchange with uh Mitch Burke, who's my neighbor up the street. Apparently, the Water District is. Uh uh they're trenching down the street and they're, they're, they're getting ready to go onto the interstate. That should be interesting. And that's all I've got.
Thanks, Marty. Matthew?
Um I have not engaged in the. Uh correspondence or activities of interest. I've received the, seen emails.
Yep, um I also have received uh Mr. Chapman's uh emails, and I've thanked him for keeping us apprised of that situation. Um I also received uh an email from Andrew Ready, who we recently appointed to the Community Television Advisory Committee, just um as a. As a note of thanks.
Yeah.
Yes.
Call me too.
Um and then I've been also getting um updates from Krista Muszinski, uh just, she's keeping us on track for updates to the. Blood plane ordinance that's coming down. Um we should probably see those beginning in March. Um I had an email from Lisa and Lacey actually related um both to the co-plant coordinator surveys that they're sending around. And also um just today, um they informed me that they've rescheduled Community Day for May nineteenth. I guess they checked in with um. Anthony and um have, that's a Sunday, so I think it works better for all the Little League schedule that's occurring at that time. And.
The nineteenth?
The nineteenth.
Sunday.
It's a Sunday, yep. Um and then I had a couple emails from Sandy Carter uh related to the work she's been doing up on Libby Hill. Need to get more apprised of that, actually. It it's not the maintenance agreement, it's it's work with the deeds and some of the owners up there, and I. Uh I think she had been charged with working on that in um. When she left council uh in a volunteer capacity that she had arranged with Nate, and I wasn't even aware that that was going on, so I just need to get up to speed on that a little bit. Um and then um I also just want to um let everyone know that I did um drop, drop off our um gift to Josh Tiffany uh at the library. He was very appreciative. Um. And just want to again thank him for all his time and energy um as interim manager.
Absolutely.
Um and then I guess that's, that's all I have for correspondence and activities. Um. Yeah, oh, go ahead.
When you're finished, and I I've, I have one more, I forgot.
Yeah, no, go ahead. I'm, that was it for me, so.
Um I forgot to mention that we did have an email from our town planner, uh Kristen, about the Brownfields.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Which has not met um se- in quite a while, I think since the last fall. Um and the um meeting that had been scheduled for January was postponed. And she's basically keeping everybody sort of apprised. I think we're gonna need to probably regroup on Brownfields and decide where we go from here. We didn't want to mention that that, that communication was out there too.
Thanks, Dan. Yeah, that's another project that's kind of floating.
Yeah.
Lost track of. Um okay, so I wanted to give Mr. Rand another opportunity to come up before we adjourn to the second session.
Okay, well, I guess, as I had said earlier, you're all well aware of. My brother-in-law's uh emails. He's very persistent, very thorough. Um but I guess my, my reasoning for being here tonight is that you all know very well what's going on, or appear to, but the public doesn't have any idea. And I think they should. I mean, the process that this has gone through just is not right. It's, it it makes no sense to us at all. Through no fault of our own, we've had to shell out a lot of money when it seemed. Very obvious when it was, when our entrance was denied, we asked repeatedly. We asked repeatedly, who's responsible for this? Why? Why? Well, we know why it was denied because Mr. Liberty and his engineer and his surveyor. Um, misrepresented facts in front of the planning board. They created too much impervious surface, which had right away been known, maybe that would have, wouldn't have happened, but we were denied. Because of that reason. They were at sixty five percent or more. We haven't, we have got, we haven't got a a real answer. Who's responsible for the denial? Um, code enforcement came back from some, I think some personal reasons and almost immediately we were denied. Somebody put this together, somebody planned this out, legal, legal represent- legal representation. Town, other town employees or members. I I don't know who it was, but soon as she got back, we were denied. And it took, it took weeks and weeks for the denial to come forward. So we were forced to the to the zoning board. Now, Mr. Um, Foley's been busy with his budget, with his budget uh, recently. Would some people be interested to know how much the town has spent on this? We were in front of the zoning board. The code officer had legal representation, the town planner had legal representation, the zoning board had legal representation. And I'm sure that's not the only time that they've had to have lawyers involved. We, like I said, we've spent twenty three thousand, all legal. Just Liberty spent money trying to deny S R access. So here we are. I'm I'm gonna try not to repeat myself too much, but um. Scott Liberty, D M Roma, John Palmeida, all misrepresented the facts in front of the planning board. They they're they're not to be held accountable so far. We have, we have filed. With the licensing boards at the state against D M Roma and Palmeida, certainly the surveyor. We'd like them to look into this. Uh, we haven't, we haven't heard anything back yet. Mr. Cullenberg, this the surveyor whose surveys they used for the planning board. Uh, has um, expressed a lot of. He, well, he he said his, his, his work was was altered, fabricated, changed, misrepresented. And and again. Why, why when Mr. Liberty was asked to amend his plan right after we were denied? Why didn't he come in? Why wasn't he forced to come in? We were, we were forced to go to the zoning board at a, you know, twenty three thousand dollar expense. Mr. Liberty comes in, amends his plan. We wait a little bit longer, but we get our entrance permit. And in what world does that not make sense? Why? Why are we, why are we denied? Mr. Liberty doesn't have to come in and amend his plan, which he obviously misrepresented, left the right of way up. It, it makes no sense. Who's responsible for this? Code is code enforcement, I mean, did the denial, that's her job, but. Where did that come from? Why? Why did it have to happen this way? Right now, Mr. Liberty is proposing to amend his Lot Three, which is the auction bond, which is now the the cannabis. You know, for the impervious issue. His engineer now says that the impervious is fifty nine point eight percent. You add on the five point two to six point two percent that we would use when we put in our new road. Miraculously, that adds up to sixty five to sixty six percent. Very convenient. It was seventy percent at one time, it was sixty five percent, it was originally supposed to be fifty point seven percent, planning board approval. Things don't add up. Things keep moving around. The numbers change. It's um. Very hard to follow, but it always, it always seems to tilt in one direction. In Mr. Liberty's favor. Bill and I would like to see this process slowed down. Like I said, we've had some new information come out from Mr. Cullenberg, the the surveyor. We're hoping to hear something from the licensing boards. What if the licensing boards find that Mr. Roma and Mr. Palmeida are in serious trouble? And the town pushes this through, March seventh comes along, Scott gets his approvals, everything's. Pushed under the table, done with. Is that the right way to go about this? I mean, it, it leaves a bad taste in our mouth. Not, it's not just the money, it's just. This isn't the way to handle this. It's, it's, it's not right. I I cannot imagine that the, the town feels good about just letting a, a developer misrepresent. Cost and a butter, a lot of money. And we we were almost denied access to our property. But we were, we were fortunate that we prevailed at the zoning board. I I guess I'm here to, let's find a way to put the brakes on this, take a little bit more time, make sure we get it right. It, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference to us other than we'd like to see it. It done right. We've got access to our property. We'll be putting our road in because we only have a year to get it done. Six months to start the process, twelve months to complete it. Which we're willing to do, but. Something, something's wrong. There were ordinances, there were regulations that were not followed, were not forced to be followed later on. It's not right. Thank you for your time.
Hey, Mr. Rand.
Okay, I understand.
So, um, just looking for a motion to enter into executive session um. Under M R S Title One, Chapter Thirteen, Section four oh five dot six dot E for legal ma- legal matters and pending litigation.
So moved.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to note for the public's knowledge that we won't be returning to public session. We'll adjourn um, directly from the executive session. Um, and we'll try to do that in the futures and unless to let folks know if we're gonna come back with a public decision. So people don't have to wait around. Um, to watch a meeting or staff doesn't have to wait around while we're in executive session.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I was also going to note that, but I appreciate it. Um. Okay, so I will go to vote. Uh, Anne?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Also, yes. Um, good evening to those watching and thank you.